Yeah, you good? Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Cumberland School Committee meeting this evening, Thursday, October 23rd, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before I begin the agenda meeting, I just want to state that the school committee has received unprofessional mailings that oppose PLAs. One mailing had the Cumberland School Department logo. We want to make clear that this mailing did not come from the Cumberland School Department or the Cumberland School Committee. Approval of agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Feather.
Second.
Second by Ms. Shea, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Consent agenda, approval of minutes. Regular meeting, 10/9/2025. Executive Session Meeting, 10/9/2025. School Bus Inspection Reports, 10/9/2025. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Shea?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Student Government Report? Student Government Activities? Yes, great. Do you mind coming to the podium? Thank you so much.
Hi, everyone. I'm Samuel Bean, class president for 2027.
And I'm Hadley Anderson.
We are the student government, uh, people here today. So, on September 2nd, it was the freshman first day of school where they were given an early opportunity to feel the high school's mellow atmosphere by greeting teachers, exploring the layout, and understanding rules and expectations. Cumberland High Schools, High School Student Government cleared their schedules to also be in attendance, offering assistance as freshmen navigated the school for the first time. Specifically, recently elected Student Government Board members, President Audrey Lambert, Vice President Flynn Holmander, Secretary Brooke Tellier, Treasurer Charlie McHugh, Social Media Coordinator Samira Nowai, Charity Coordinator Sophie Tebow, Publicity Coordinator Lillian Sousa. They were all exemplary when it came to smoothly transitioning these students.
In late September, CHS Student Government ran its first successful blood drive of the school year. This Rhode Island Blood Center let us know that with our donations, 99 people were helped. As I speak to you now, some of our members, along with our advisor, Mr. Kern, are being recognized by the Rhode Island Blood Center at Topgolf Cranston, as we are one of the top donating schools over the past year.
In the brisk couple of weeks following the first official meeting, the board began working on our annual Spirit Week traditions. We had a blast last week participating in all the games and our events that our advisors planned for us. It was an extremely fun and well-attended event. On Tuesday, we decorated hallways and had our very first CHS Has Talent Night that featured skits, rock bands, and unbelievable singers. On Wednesday, we had our annual Powderpuff Games, and on Thursday, we all had a blast at Class Clash. Friday, we had the whole school at our annual prep rally, followed by the football game that night. Finally, on Saturday, we danced the night away at Homecoming Dance. It was an awesome week for all CHS students.
Now, on to what is next. Student Government will still uphold the role in Cumberland's nonprofit Happy Baskets organization by implementing youthful perspectives and ideas. Happy Baskets is in full swing, and the team will be approaching their first few charity events of this new school year. We started with a very successful food drive during Spirit Week, and now we will start collecting donations and food through all the schools in town and by donating to our fill-it truck right before Thanksgiving.
Thank you for having us, and do you guys have any questions?
Any questions? I just want to say thank you. I know Spirit Week was a blast, and I also want to say, great job with the Happy Baskets. It goes to such a good cause, so thank you for doing that. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it as well. Have a good night, guys.
You have a good night, thank you. Report out of Executive Session Meeting, Report Out of Executive Session Meeting on 10/3/2025. Report out of Executive Session Votes, no votes were taken. Vote to seal minutes of executive session, can I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Goldstein?
Second.
Second by Ms. Shea, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
That passes five to two, with Mr. Bacon and Mr. Dean in the negative. Personnel announcements, Dr. Thornton?
Madam Chair, just one tonight, we have a resignation this evening, effective 10/8/2025. Margarito Suarez, Custodian Knights BF Norton, and Floater.
Thank you. Reports of standing committees, Fiscal Management Subcommittee, Ms. Smith?
Fiscal did meet earlier this evening, we do have two resolutions that we'll be discussing and voting on shortly, and one payment of a bill that we will talk about further in the agenda.
Thank you. Policy and Procedures Subcommittee, Ms. Feather?
Policy and Procedures did meet this week, and we have two amended policies for you later on.
Great, thank you. Achievement and Communications Subcommittee, our next meeting is on October 28th. District Health and Wellness Subcommittee update, Ms. Shea?
Yep, our first meeting is scheduled for October 30th.
Thank you very much. Public Hearing, Reading of Amended Policies, Ms. Feather?
Yes, we'll be going through these, I think, during the, I always get confused as to when to, uh, (laugh) yep, yep, under New Business, though, that's when we discuss and/or vote. So, right now, don't I, do I just have them read into the record, is what I'm saying? So, yes, so I would just like to have those two policies, G6 Personnel Benefit Policy for Non-Unit Administrative and Support Personnel, and I-17 Homework Policy read into the record.
Thank you, Ms. Feather. Is there public comment on those two policies? Any public comment on those two policies? Okay. Is there any comments from the public on anything? Okay. Please come to the podium, there is a yellow pad with a pen, just sign in, state your name, your address, you have three minutes to present, and the school committee normally does not comment. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. For, for record, my name is Anthony Cherry, I'm Assistant Executive Director at, at Build RI. You'll have a very detailed presentation tonight. I just have one quick comment on the agenda item itself. It states an independent feasibility study to determine if the implementation of a project labor agreement is in the best interest of the Cumberland School Department. I think that's a mis-typed, because it should be, it should read, the best interest of the Cumberland taxpayers. And that's the charge, I think, that the PLA does, it affects the taxpayers, not just the school department itself, but the constituency that you all serve, and so, I just want to get that on the record. Thank you so much, and, and thank you again for hosting this tonight. And 94 Turner Ave, East Province, thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Yes, please. So, this gentleman, and then you two will be next. Thank you. Again, your name, your address, three minutes, the committee normally does not respond.
Yep, my name is Mark Lingren, I am on the, the Building Committee for BF Norton School. In the interest of full disclosure, I worked for a union contractor for my entire career, 43 years. I do have some questions from regarding PLAs, because I'd never really worked directly under a PLA. Other people in the company did, so I, if I ask a question, is somebody allowed to answer it?
They will not answer it right now, no.
Okay, so, question number one is, if we sign on to a PLA, and that will be done by the school committee, not the building committee, that's my understanding? Yes? Just keep going, all right. If, if we choose to award to a non-union sub, will it be required to sign a single project labor agreement with the unions? That wasn't so hard, okay. And that's for the job duration, and it ends when the job is over. Okay. Next question is, obviously, in addition to what these guys make in, in the envelope, there are a whole bunch of fringe benefits that are paid, so, shaking your head, I assume that contractor would not need to pay the fringe benefits, he'd...
So, I think we can talk about that when that portion helps, but I think if you just voice your questions, I think this is a great opportunity.
Okay, that's fine. Number three is, our, we've had experience with a particular trade where a contractor fell way behind on benefits, payments. If that should happen on this project, I'd like some sort of guarantee that personnel don't get pulled from the subcontractor that's performing on our job, or if they do get pulled, how does that get dealt with? And last but not least, I, I saw a, in the, the, the study that was done for the Pawtucket School System, indicated that there may be some specialty contractors where there aren't union options that would be allowed to work on the project without joining the union. If that's the case, are separate construction entrances required?
Spend three minutes, sir.
Okay, I, I was done anyway.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All great questions, Michael Sabatoni. I don't think I gave my address last time, so I apologize. I currently reside at 22 Pepament Lane in the fine town of Johnston, Rhode Island. Born and raised, 58 years. To answer some questions I've heard, just to the audience, duration is for this project only, hence the title and the term, Project Labor Agreement. It is union-neutral, any contractor can bid on it, it's standardized, as I had mentioned, to the committee, terms and conditions in a very complex industry. Also, are there payment of benefits or additional costs to a union scale as opposed to prevailing rate, what this project is? The answer is, there are very minimal, if any, a little bit more in the union agreements, which mostly have to do with labor management funds and industry advancement funds, but I'd say they are pennies and not dollars. Is there an obligation to absolutely have to pay into the union benefit funds for companies that want to come in, as long as they pay the prevailing rate and, and provide for pension and health and welfare in their own companies? The answer is, yes, they may, and they do not have to pay into the union trust funds, and I believe you'll get that in the package that we're going to present to you tonight, well, like I had mentioned last time I was here, 50-plus project labor agreements in the last 10 years. All of these questions have already been answered. As far as guarantee, there's one guarantee that you get when you get a PLA, which is access to the thousands of men and women that we have in the unions, not only here in Rhode Island, but across the region and nationally as well, a network of trained men and women that all have the same skill set, whether you're in Rhode Island or California. There's no pulling of manpower. Matter of fact, I heard, one of the concerns of the school committee last week was, meeting your deadline, I believe it was June of 2027. Well, you don't have that access if you just hire a single merit shop company right now, who might be under pressure to get a job done. He's got nowhere to go, as opposed to, if you hire under a project labor agreement, and that merit company signs that PLA, he then has access not only to the local union hiring halls, but our network of hiring halls. I'd also add, not only in the United States, but Canada as well. As far as specialty contractors, there are provisions in there as well that address specialty firms that could come on, again, signed for this project only, adhere to the terms and conditions, and pay the prevailing rate for short durations, they're allowed to do so as well. And I believe Mr. Mancini is going to provide you with all that information that is currently being used on probably 14 or 15 school com-project, well, school construction projects right now, either under construction or soon to be under construction, under the same agreement that we're asking you to consider here in Cumberland. So, and I know I might be getting up later as well, but all great questions, I hope I answered your questions to the audience.
Three minutes, thank you.
Good evening, Chair and Committee, my name is Alvin Reyes, I live on 17 South Long Street in Johnston, Rhode Island. I am the Membership Development Coordinator for the IBW Local 99, and my job primarily is to interview journey workers, men and women, and apprentices from non-union shops that want to come in to the union sector. A lot of people forget about the workers, you know, they suffer a lot of, you know, misrepresentation from business owners, not all of them, that fail to pay them the benefits that they deserve, healthcare, and especially in this economy, it could, it could be, you know, detrimental to a family. They come to us for rights that they may not be able to speak up on. On jobs like these that would, that require prevailing wages, they may not always get that. We have evidence of contractors that have worked on projects, even here in Cumberland, where contractors have done what they're not supposed to do, and PLAs ensure the protection of the workers, including apprentices like Isaac. Isaac went here to Cumberland High School, he was asking so many questions, we, he decided to come out of school just to come here for this. He went to Cumberland High School, he said, "Oh, what's, what's a PLA?", he, he has no idea. There's journeymen with licenses that make less than Isaac after going to four years of school, and they have a license, they don't have healthcare for their families, they don't have a retirement plan, and they're a lot older than Isaac, they have kids, and Isaac has an opportunity right now, because of his father as well, that's a union worker, and the union doesn't mean that we're better than anybody, we just have more rights, and we all stand together. You saw the abundance of people that showed up here that last time, and it wasn't because we want to get paid more, it's because we want those people out there that are getting mistreated to get the same rights that we have. That's the only reason, and that's why he wanted to come and represent not only his community, because he pays taxes here now, right, after, after, Isaac told me a whole bunch, you know, "I didn't, I didn't do that well in school", I said, "Me neither". He said, "But the trades provided me an opportunity." Now, he's going to be making a good living, he's going to be able to buy a house here in Cumberland, but I bet you if he doesn't work here, after he pays taxes and creates a future for the next generation, he might not decide to live here. Why? Why would I contribute to a community that does not offer the same benefits to the residents? He, he told me that, and he'll speak about that, because he, he don't want to come by himself, but Isaac wanted to say to you all and ask questions, I didn't know if you could answer because of the Robert Rules of Order, but he wanted to ask why he couldn't be part of this project. Why couldn't he be part of his community in his same school? Why can't he contribute to it? And I said, "Why don't you go over there and ask them, and maybe they'll tell you why you can't be part of this project"?
So, my name is Isaac Valera, I am a resident here, I graduated Cumberland High School, class of 2024, now, working with Alvin, not directly, with a different union company. He helped me get in, we're doing the training. Technically, it's my first year, so I'm, I'm kind of new to all this kind of stuff, and my biggest concern was, you know, we, we want the community being a part of this project. We want the guys working on the project to get their fair share of what they work for, you know what I mean? We don't want it to just go to the contractor and never make it down to the actual workers, the guy in the crawl space, and the guy putting the mortar on the wall, the electrician, that you guys, you know, nobody will ever notice, but they're there getting paid. So, I did graduate here, um, I did, my family's here, my sisters, my brother's sisters, they all go to, they're part of the, the school system still, they haven't graduated yet, and I, I would love to be, be able to, you know, I worked on that project, but if we don't do a PLA, you know, that might not be a possibility. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? I'm sure you heard me say, before, state your name, your address, three minutes, and the committee normally does not respond. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Christine Hunter, and this is...
I'm Stephen Hunter.
Hi, and we live at 17 Old Restontham Road, here in Cumberland, and we homeschool our kids, we have throughout, and we found out about a college program through New England Institute of Technology for seniors, so we currently are, oldest is a junior, so we are just looking for how we can find out more information about how that would work for homeschoolers, and how other homeschoolers would be able to tap into services like that in the Cumberland school system. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Thornton is going to approach you, so that he can help you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? New Business? Just a quick thing on the agenda, the lettering under New Business is A, B, C, D, E, B, C. It should be A, B, C, D, E, F, G. Just, it was typo, it's no big deal, but I just want to state that. Discussion and a vote to approve amended policies, Ms. Feather?
Hello, there we go, all right. So, we have two policies to consider tonight, so G6 Personnel Benefit Policy for Non-Unit Administrative and Support Personnel is the first one. Sorry, I just need to get back to my notes here. Alrighty, G6. Essentially, what we, what we were doing with this policy was aligning this to the CTA contracts, so, aligning the non-unit administrative and support personnel to the CTA contacts. We do this every year, and we align the salary ranges and cumulative sick days. So, that did pass the, the Policy and Procedures Subcommittee, three to, three to zero, and I would move passage.
Ms. Feather makes a motion to pass G6 Personnel Benefit Policy for Non-Unit Administrative and Support Personnel, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes seven to zero.
Okay, great, thank you. And the next one is I-17, the Homework Policy. What I really appreciated about this was that, you know, this was something that had been brought to us by members of the community about, you know, concerns with there being too much homework, especially, or too, too much time spent on homework, especially in the younger elementary grades. And so, actually, in elementary, just in general. So, the administration did a lot of work and partnered with teachers to make sure that they had a policy in place that was acceptable to, to everybody, and we had a really great discussion around it the other night. So, a few changes within this policy, essentially, what it does is reduces some of the time expectations on the, on the children, on the students, so that they're able, able to have better balance, but still also be able to practice their schoolwork. So, I would move passage.
Ms. Feather makes a motion to approve I-17 Homework Policy, do I have a second? Second by Ms. Goldstein, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Discussion and a vote to approve homeschool instruction requests for 2025, '26 school year, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Smith?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bacon, and...
I'm sorry, Mr. Bacon.
Who said this? Oh my, someone said it. Who said it?
It was me, I'll second.
Second by Ms. Goldstein. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Discussion and a vote to approve memorandum of agreement for foster-grandparent program for the Cumberland School Department. We did approve this the last meeting, however, it was school-specific, now we're making it for the Cumberland School Department, so if other administrators within the principals want to add this on, they can do it versus having to wait the two weeks to a month to come back to the school committee. We just want them to be able to do their day-to-day operations. Motion to approve? Motion by Ms. Goldstein? Second by Mr. Bacon, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. The Chair accepts the recommendations for appointment of District Health and Wellness Committee members, Ms. Shea, would you like to speak to this?
Madam Chair, as Chair of this District Health and Wellness Subcommittee, I'm pleased to present the following individuals as recommended appointments to the Chair of the Cumberland School Committee for consideration. From school department employees, Mrs. Malcolm, Principal at Cumberland Hill Elementary, Mrs. Carbonic, from Principal at Ashton, Mr. Crowley, Athletic Director, parent representatives, it's Ms. Callie Moore, Ms. Erin Zuck, and student representative would be Mr. August Richardson, Cumberland High School Senior. These dedicated individuals representing staff, parents, and students will play an essential role in supporting our district's effort to foster healthy school environments, strengthen wellness, excuse me, initiatives, and ensure compliance with the state and federal requirements. Their participation reflects our shared commitment to the well-being and success, excuse me, of all Cumberland students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Discussion and a vote to approve resolutions, Ms. Smith?
Yes, we have the two resolutions tonight, SCPR-10/2025-140 and 141. We did vote on these in our Fiscal Subcommittee meeting earlier this evening, and it was passed three to zero, and I would move passage.
Ms. Smith makes a motion to pass both SC-PR-10/2025-140 to 141, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dean, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Discussion and a vote to approve payment of bills, Ms. Smith?
Yes, we have one bill this evening, in the amount of $279,868.33. That did pass Fiscal Subcommittee three zero, and I would move passage on that payment.
Ms. Smith makes motions to pass payment of the bills in $279,868.33, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dean, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. We have two people that are going to recuse, and then we're going to take a three-minute break to get everyone set up, and then we'll move on to the next part of the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have to disclose, my son is presently in one of the unions, and he is heavily involved with a lot of the school construction happening in the state. His business does bid on that, which I fully support, sorry. And because of that, and the potential that his business could be bidding on business here in Cumberland, I do find that I have, and ethically, I have to recuse myself for conflict of interest, so I will be recusing myself from all PLA discussions. Thank you.
And, Mr. Bacon, you're recusing?
Yeah, I'm recusing, as stated before, I am currently employed by a company that is working at the BF Norton Project.
Thank you both, we're going to take a three-minute break, we'll reconvene at 7:30. It is 7:27, we'll reconvene at 7:30. It is seven twenty-seven, we'll reconvene at seven thirty. We are reconvening back at seven thirty P M. Next on the agenda is discussion and our action on authorizing an independent feasibility study to determine if implementing a project labor agreement is in the best interest of the Cumberland School Department. Mr. Adams?
You guys want to take your seats, yeah. Mr. Whitney, I don't know if you guys want to pick a place to. Yeah, I think so. Good evening. Yeah, I think that's right. So I'm having some feedback, Mike, I don't know if that bothers you, it doesn't bother me, but it's probably killing everybody else. Oh, good, okay, that's fine.
Can we make sure these work properly? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Alright.
Yeah, it's working.
Closer, is that better?
That's working. So the Chair asked me to kind of serve as, I guess I'll call it emcee, for the discussion. We've got, and just so the public is aware, we've got two attorneys who are presenting viewpoints on this topic. We've got Attorney Greg Mancini, who's the Executive Director of and General Counsel of Build RI, as I understand it.
Correct.
Build RI is a Rhode Island Trade Association that represents more than ten thousand trades workers and it's a joint labor management partnership. I think I'm correct here, I think Attorney Mancini will be making the case for the committee to, and I'm paraphrasing the Rhode Island Supreme Court here, to authorize an objective reasoned study using reviewable criteria to determine whether the adoption of a PLA helps to achieve the goals of the competitive bidding statutes.
Yes, we are not here asking this committee to authorize a project labor agreement. We are asking this committee to actually objectively analyze it.
And we also have Attorney Chris Whitney, who's a partner at the law firm Pierce Satwood. Chris has been practicing law for several years. He has a reputation as one of the top construction lawyers in New England. He's represented people in all facets of the industry, including owners, like the school committee is in this situation. Developers, subcontractors, architects, engineers, et cetera. Chris is going to be making the case that there is no need for such a study because a PLA, in this instance, will not achieve the goals of the competitive bidding statutes.
So just to go back, so is Chris not legal counsel to the superintendent?
I'm getting there, you gotta let me finish. He is not legal counsel to the superintendent, no. Each side's going to be given thirty minutes for their presentation. I will say, when I mentioned that to the school committee, they were hopeful that that was an outside edge and that you'd be able to do it more quickly.
I myself in twenty-six minutes, is that okay? I'm kidding.
You're getting thirty minutes, so I don't care. I really am just the emcee, but I just am giving both of you a heads up. If they start to nod off, don't take offense. I'm going to keep the time. I also have a cute little thing that says three minutes, so I'm not saying to you anything, but I may put this up if either one of you get to three minutes to go, just so that you know that. After each side presents, the Chair is going to open it up for questions from the committee. And the Chair has asked that members hold their comments or their questions until you guys are done. Sometimes if you're in court, you don't get that luxury, they just start peppering you with questions, which can be off-putting. But you guys hopefully will just get to say your piece and then when you're done, the questions will come. I think the committee would appreciate it, and I can tell you, I would appreciate it, if the audience would just remain quiet while the presentations are going on, out of respect for those who are presenting, whether you're pro or anti or this or that. It's just a respectful thing to do, the folks who are presenting, no matter what their viewpoint is. Before we get going, I want to take a minute to explain how Attorney Whitney became involved here and what his role has been, because I think there may be a bit of confusion that he has been hired to fight the PLA. And that is not accurate. About eighteen months ago, a controversy emerged with Torroto Architects, which is an architecture firm that has performed work for the school department on several projects. The Torroto firm took the position that its contract included architectural services for the current phase of the BF Norton Project. The school department did not agree with that and had planned to go out to bid for architectural services. The Torroto firm filed a preliminary injunction in the Superior Court to stop the school department from going out to bid on the BF Norton Project for architectural services. I am counsel to the school committee and I realize that that is not the type of case that is in my experience and I am a big believer in different horses for different races. I think there are some people who do the work that I do who don't take that tact and that's a mistake from my perspective. So I recommended, and the school committee retained, Chris's firm, to defend that preliminary injunction case and he did it successfully. The school department ultimately hired AI three after going out to bid for architectural services for the BF Norton Project. Those who were on the school committee while Chris was litigating that preliminary injunction will recall that even back then, there were concerns about the timing of the BF Norton Project and how that litigation with the architect, which I think ended about fifteen months ago in that vicinity, might impact the construction schedule. So since that time, up until now, Chris has been providing legal counsel to the school committee and to the administration on construction issues related to ongoing renovation projects and on the BF Norton Project specifically, including on the concept of a PLA. So I wanted to make sure that that was clear, that Chris has been advising the school committee on multiple areas of construction law, not just related to this issue, but for eighteen months. And so I think that was important, because I did read your piece.
Yeah, I'm actually still confused, but that's okay. Chris is, I got great respect for Chris, but I was on a telephone call with Mr. Sabatoni and the superintendent.
Mancini, should I start your timer? Because I'm not trying to make, I'm not trying to.
Well, you asked me, you said it was, you don't have to start the timer. You said to me, or you said to the group, that hope it clarifies everything and to me it didn't clarify, so.
Okay. Well, I'm going to say, I'm going to say, go for, go ahead and start, how's that?
That sounds great. So, yeah, like I said, I am somewhat confused because I was listening to a conversation between the superintendent and one of my colleagues, who said, alls we have to do is convince Chris Whitney to do the study. And so, and Chris I got great respect for, but, you know, he has a long history representing non-union companies. In fact, he's responsible for the standard that we're going to talk about today. But anyways, I'm going to go on to the rest of my presentation. Actually, before I go on my presentation, I want to address another issue. And that is an issue that was raised by Voice Chair Smith at the last meeting. And she asked, why are we finding all this out now? And she, I took that to mean she was surprised. And all of us in the building trades, we were also surprised too, because we'd been regularly communicating with a number of officials in Cumberland, really since June of twenty twenty-three. But again, why are we here? We're here to ask the school committee to actually undergo an analysis that virtually every major school construction project in the state has done. As for my presentation, what I'd like to do tonight is provide a brief discussion, the general challenges of any construction project, particularly large ones, discuss the unique provisions of the National Labor Relations Act that are only applicable to construction, define what a project labor agreement is and its benefits, and their prevalence in the marketplace. Briefly discuss a Supreme Court case that you talked about, that determined the process for utilizing project labor agreements and I'll let you know how many local entities have gone underneath this process and maybe make some, then I'll make some concluding remarks. If there's enough time, my colleagues, Justin Kelly and Mike Sabatoni, may want to say something. On any construction project, particularly large construction projects, there are general project challenges always. They're related to project design, potential design defects, budget costs, and in particular escalating costs, financing, latent site conditions, labor, labor productivity issues, and many other problems, some of which, or many, depending on the project, may be unforeseen or unanticipated. So in fact, in order to mitigate risk, on any, virtually any public works project in the state of Rhode Island, the General Assembly requires these projects to be bonded. Construction's also labor-intensive. There are hundreds of skilled craftsmen and women from multiple crafts, working different disciplines for multiple employers, working in a single location with limited space, building different portions of an ongoing project. It's a unique skill set for all these tradesmen and women and quite frankly, it's a unique skill set that's in great demand. In fact, lack-qualified workers is the chief concern of the National Chapter of the Associated General Contractors of America. Locally, municipalities in our state have to deliver fourteen major construction projects by July of twenty twenty-seven. And that is a major concern of local construction managers. In fact, I was given this spreadsheet, which I know you can't read, today on concern of project overlap and available skilled labor in the Rhode Island marketplace. On top of this, the Department of Labor and Training predicts a ten percent increase in the need for construction workers by twenty thirty-two. And on top of that, the age of our workers is not getting any younger. For example, in two thousand and four, thirteen percent of the construction workforce in Rhode Island was fifty-five years or older. Whereas today, it is twenty-eight percent of the construction workforce. It is threatening the state's ability to meet demand. Now, in nineteen fifty-nine, Congress amended the National Labor Relations Act to accommodate conditions specific to construction. That allowed employers to unilaterally enter into pre-hire collective bargaining agreements with construction unions and construction unions only. Under a construction pre-hire agreement, it is the contractor or the business owner that unilaterally, interfirmally, and voluntarily decides to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with unions. PLA is a specific type of project, pre-hire agreement, for all trades, for all crafts, on one project that supersede existing collective bargaining agreements. And they're primarily used on large construction projects. Excuse me. Nationally, PLAs are regularly utilized on over fifty billion dollars worth of works, excuse me, fifty billion dollars worth of projects every year, and primarily in the private sector. Locally, PLAs have been utilized on over eleven billion dollars worth of work over the past twenty-five years. Currently, there are more than thirty projects in Rhode Island utilizing PLAs and it's on over three billion dollars worth of work. When I started in my capacity, in this position twenty-five years ago, the entire market was three billion dollars. Now, benefits of a PLA, just generally speaking, are that really the biggest benefit is immediate access to a deep pool of skilled labor. And we get that pool because we invest in labor. We invest seven and a half million dollars every year in recruiting, training, and retraining workers to make them the highest skilled workers in the marketplace. There is absolutely no other comparable entity that makes that type of investment in trade worker training. As a consequence, our contractors, our signatory contractors, have immediate access to a qualified pool of workers. In addition, they have, we have regional and national networks for workers in case we need them. Now, because of our investment in training, we have an unparalleled record in safety. Let me give you an example. From nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and twenty-two, there have been forty-five fatalities in construction, forty-eight fatalities in construction in the state of Rhode Island. And of those forty-eight, only three were union workers. And the reason is, is because, well, I'm sorry, not only that, it's the union companies, the union workers that work on the most perilous job sites. And the reason is, is because of our investment in workers. In the packet I sent to the school committee yesterday, I included a two thousand and two, two thousand and twenty-two in-depth study that reviewed over a hundred, excuse me, fifteen hundred construction projects that included that craft labor is also more productive. And it's more productive, according to the study, and it attributes that more productivity to the union's investment in labor. And that is why virtually every contractor, every general contractor, construction manager in the state of Rhode Island is signed to at least two trade unions. Well, not everyone, but virtually everyone, I apologize. Additional benefits of a project labor include uniform job site, excuse me, uniform job site terms and conditions, predictable wage costs for a duration of the project, wage law compliance assurances. Now, construction is a notorious industry for wage theft and misclassification of workers. And that is why, two years ago, the General Assembly passed legislation that made misclassification of workers a felony. In fact, the town of Cumberland and the school department has had a number of these cases in which there's a number outstanding claims against contractors on your public works projects. One is for misclassification. In addition, another prominent provision of a project labor agreement is no work-stopp covenant, excuse me, for disputes, for collective bargaining expirations, for anything. According to, sorry, according to the School of Industrial and Labor Relations at Cornell, strikes and work stoppages for organizing are significantly up nationally. In fact, in twenty twenty-four, there were three hundred fifty-nine labor-related job actions involving two hundred thirty-nine thousand employers, workers. Personally, I think in the current economic environment, this is only going to increase and increase substantially. Now, job actions happen from time to time, some we know about and some we don't. Let me give you an example. Just last week, fifty workers walked off the job of a major employer and fifty trade workers walked off the job for four days for a major employer in the state of Rhode Island. During COVID, an entire workforce of a hundred people walked off the job with safety concerns for more than a week. That cost the company hundreds of thousands of dollars in back pay and more in lost production. Several years ago, the sheet metal workers stopped working in the middle of the construction of the Brown River House Student Housing Project when their collective bargaining agreement expired. So they were on strike at Brown River House and the building next door was under a project labor agreement, they were working there. URI had a close call a couple of years ago when they were building a chemistry building. During the construction of the chemistry building under a project labor agreement, the teams just went on strike statewide. And they went, and the day of a pour at the URI Chemistry Building, the day of a pour of concrete, a lot of trade workers were there, ready to handle the concrete, move the concrete, and got a phone call in the morning that the concrete's not coming. By about ten o'clock, the concrete was there because we were a project labor agreement. And so all the project labor, there wasn't a lot of PLAs at that time, but all the project labor agreements going, the teams have delivered, the other non-PLA projects, teams has not delivered. Since that time, URI has undergone this process, or process of a feasibility study for every major capital-proven project they've had. major capital-proven project they've had. There are regular labor management working committees that anticipate potential challenges before they occur on a PLA, to make the job more, even more efficient. There is a joint committee to facilitate opportunities for MBEW B committees in order to meet state law. Contrary to the belief of some, non-union contractors can compete openly and fairly. Now initially, or years ago, I should say, the primary reason for non-union contractors not participating or not even competing fairly was they had to pay double benefits. So they had to pay, their workers would have to pay into the union benefit fund and into the company benefit fund, okay? Last, several years ago, the building trades did away with that. They said, they put it in writing, okay, and they'll say, it's part of the PLA. If a non-union company has benefits, they don't have to pay into the union benefit fund. So, so there's no, there's no reason why they can't compete fairly. And their workers, they don't have to join the union. I mean, the union will charge an agency fee, but they don't have to join the union. So I'd also point out, there are, there's one general contractor working on the University of Rhode Island PLA, University of Rhode Island PLA project, who's non-union. And there's another general contractor who is in the process of being awarded a project, a PLA project at the Rhode Island Airport Corporation, who is also non-union. So we believe that open shop companies can compete on PLA projects. The issue is, it's not whether they, it's not what's, you should not cater your terms and conditions to them. The issue is, what's in the best interests of the taxpayers of Cumberland, not what's in the best interests of firms that decide not to be unioned. That's their choice, and that, and that's fine. But that doesn't change the fact that Cumberland has to make a choice for themselves and in the best interest of their taxpayers. Now, I want to talk about PLAs on public projects. How am I doing for time? Halfway through. Okay, let's talk about the federal government first. President Obama signed an executive order, encouraged, when he was president, signed an executive order encouraging project labor agreements for any project over $25 million, okay? President Biden signed an executive order for any project, any federal project over $35 million, a mandatory project, or at least a mandatory analysis for a project labor agreement. I think it was a mandatory project labor agreement. That was, I'd say about six months ago, or maybe even less, reaffirmed by this administration, President Trump's administration, it's mandatory, $35 million project, federal project, project labor agreement. In fact, recently, National, New Gosh, National Guard Building was built in Quantit, under, under, with federal money, under a project labor agreement. According to the procurement officer, it was on time, on budget. Currently, NOAA is building a major expansion down in Middletown, a federal project procured through NAFAC, it is under a project labor agreement. So the federal government is encouraging project, is utilizing project labor agreements. Now, on public works projects, awarding authorities, as previously indicated, must first conduct an objective reasoned study to date. And as I indicated at the beginning of my conversation, I don't think this process so far has been objective, all right? And that's based on the size and complexity of the project, as the project. Right, let me read this. The court reasoned, as the size and complexity of the project increase, so too does the premium on timely completion, and for certain projects, the potential benefits of a PLA, such as a ban on work stoppages, may come to outweigh the anti-competitive impact of such agreements. Moreover, the assurance of predictable costs, which I had alluded to earlier, and the procurement of a steady supply of labor, which I believe is the chief reason, okay, should depend, should not depend on whether an owner, mistake by the way, the town of North Providence recently did an analysis for two elementary schools of similar size to Cumberland, the one Cumberland's considering. Their analysis, which was previously sent to you, said a PLA will ensure a continuous supply of labor, help prescreen, identify, track, and govern personnel during the abnormal sensitivity of occupied sites of school grounds, protect against potential labor disruptions, safeguard the ability of their projects to reach substantial completion within RIDE imposed deadlines, protecting RIDE reimbursements, which I know was talked about at our, at the last meeting I was here before. It would also safeguard the ability of projects to maintain a timeline that will mitigate any and all risks of negative impact on the academic year. And it will do so, and I quote, "Do all the above without significantly reducing or negatively affecting competition for project, for work on the projects." That's not Greg Mancini saying that. That is an independent, objective reasoned study by a third party. At the public, at a public hearing for the University of Rhode Island on the analysis of their PLA for the Fine Arts Center, one of the panelists said, and I quote, and bear with me, "It's important for us to focus on how well PLAs have functioned in the past in Rhode Island. What has happened in other jurisdictions is clearly different from the laws and relationships that exist in Rhode Island." And that's important, okay? Because this is a local marketplace, local workers, and we have high, high union density. An examination, and an examination of both public sector and private sector projects in Rhode Island, which has been governed by a PLA for the past 30 years, shows a very highly favorable response to the PLA arrangement. The projects in question were completed safely, and on time, and on budget, and we have a specific, we have specific information of that effect." Again, not Greg Mancini, an independent, third-party person saying. Town of Middletown also did a study. They focused primarily on the potential adverse impact of competition. Their analysis revealed, the list of bidders, on multiple projects prior and concluded, and I quote, "Given the overwhelming majority of subcontractors will be unioned, and PLA will provide benefits of labor stability, mitigation of potential interruption to the work and predictable costs, without significantly impacting the project's final cost. On balance, it appears that the decision of the building committee to utilize a PLA would be lawful and beneficial, given the nature of the project, the timetable for completion, and the likely limited impact on competition." South Kingstown, one of the most recent studies. In Rhode Island, the consistent analysis of the value of the project labor agreements during the construction of a school site has led many municipalities, if not the very strong majority of municipalities, to choose, enter into a project labor agreement for a school project. In effect, the level of ubiquity inherently creates a labor market expectation that a school construction project of this nature will rely on union labor. This sort of expectation creates enhanced risk of labor disruptions if any similarly situated school project bucked the overall trend and decided against, decided against the average, advantage of a project labor agreement, sorry. Again, an independent person saying that, independent analysis. At last count, since Chris Whitney convinced our Supreme Court to do, to impose that standard, okay, to his credit, by the way, there have been 50 objective reasoned studies conducted to determine the adoption of the, whether a PLA. That's what we're asking. Just be one of the 50, be the next one. If, if we come out on the wrong side, we came out on the wrong side, okay? These, virtually every one of these analyses have uniformly concluded that PLAs on these projects achieve the goals and objectives of the State Purchase Act. Initial budgets of these projects were virtually, probably from the $20 million to $250 million range, and, and most of these projects were primarily schools. There's other, there's other diversity in the projects, the library, a parking garage, office building, higher education building. Speaking of higher ed, I didn't mention, and I should have, both Brown University and Providence College have entered into memorands of understanding with, with the building trades. Excuse me. Any project that they're going to construct over $25 million, they're going to do an all-union construction project labor agreement, any project. So, and that is because of their concern for access to skilled labor. So we believe that the, as, this particular project would fit the mold of at least doing a study, and we believe the value, I've demonstrated, I believe I've demonstrated the value of a PLA and our history of a PLA, the record is unblemished for at least doing the study. So based on this record, I'm supremely confident that if the school committee conducted the study, it would conclude that a PLA for construction of BF Norton would meet, would meet the goals and objectives of the State Purchase Act. One thing that I do want to comment on is, at the last meeting we were at, I guess two meetings ago, you had accepted the guaranteed maximum price. If you were to do something, we, we don't think that the guaranteed maximum price should be altered. We think that is set. So this is a novel situation that I have not experienced before, and so there are a lot of moving parts. But, you know, we're partners, we're members of your community, as evidenced by public comment tonight, and we want to see a successful project for this community, and we don't want to see you lose your reimbursements, but we also don't want to see the project go higher than what you've agreed to as a price. We respect that. So we're not here to change your pricing, we're here to offer this, or suggest that you go through this process and, you know, see, see what happens. And the biggest thing is for it to be an objective process, because it has not been objective to date. How am I doing for time? Yes, just, I'd like my colleague Justin Kelly to say something.
Chairwoman Vogel, Superintendent Thornton, members of the committee. My name is Justin Kelly. I'm normally loud enough to speak without a microphone, but if you need me. First of all, I just want to address something. I'm a resident here. I live at 15 Mysteria Lane with my daughter Abigail, who I had the pleasure of watching graduate from kindergarten in this room, my daughter Fiona, my wife Heather. I would lie to you if, excuse me, I'd lie to you if I'd said that that flyer didn't bother me. The fact is, is that I'll wear it as a badge of honor and courage. You know, folks want to run me out of town with pitchforks and torches, okay? There's a dark history in this country, a dark part of our history of lynching, violence, murder of union organizers and their families. I don't think that's what this is about, but I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that. Like I said, I'm a resident here in town, I'm a taxpayer, I'm proud of that. The pre-apprenticeship program, Building Futures, of which I will send to you all a flyer about, that engages in agreements with almost every major user of construction services in this state, is a pre-apprenticeship program that allows young men and women who are living in a low-income situation to turn their lives around. I'm a graduate of that program. I lived in Providence, I'm from Dorchester, Massachusetts originally. Without that program, without the opportunity that that provided me, I wouldn't be able to be here. I wouldn't be able to live the life that I've led. Because it was hard work, effort, learning a craft, learning a skill set, learning responsibility, being able to get up every morning to provide for my family, and that's all anybody wants, I firmly believe. That is the American dream. My father's a Vietnam veteran, Marine Corps veteran, every single male member of my family been in the military, up to me. That pre-apprenticeship program provides veterans, provides people of color, provides low-income people opportunities, opportunities that they need, and project labor agreements guarantee the placement of pre-apprenticeship and apprentices. Every single PLA has graduates of Building Futures, and 15% of the hours of every craft, of every contractor, in the total aggregate of every job, are done by apprentices. I want to talk about something else that happened here in the town, and is pervasive in the state, unfortunately, in the construction industry. Tax fraud is a serious problem. There are contractors that are unscrupulous, they can't help themselves. They engage in complex and sometimes simple engagements of wage theft and employee misclassification. Some of the most egregious cases in the past, recent years have happened here in our town, on this very building that we're sitting in. Company WL Builders had a fall river, was found guilty of almost $1 million in wage theft over the course of three projects. This project, the Cumberland Hill Elementary Project, the Horace Mann Hall at Rhode Island College. There's a kickback scheme with the general contractor's personnel, where they exploited vulnerable immigrant workers and contractors. A project labor agreement is an upfront quality assurance process that ensures that type of thing will not happen. It makes upfront the ability for that to happen impossible. Otherwise, on public works and private jobs across the state is rampant. I see it day to day. I see workers who are ripped off, not paid, misclassified, forced to pay the tax burden for their employer. Project labor agreement prevents that. I do want to just ask, my time, three minutes, I'll use the rest of my time on Mrs. Sabatoni. Thank you.
So Madam Chair, members of the committee, Michael Sabatoni, I'm president of Rhode Island Building and Construction Trades Council. I am the General Secretary Treasurer for the Laborers International Union in North America, represent 540,000 men and women across the United States and Canada and Rhode Island, about 10,000-plus construction workers, 16 trade unions. And to go back to the attorney's explanation of why Mr. Whitney is sitting here was not an explanation. I deal with attorneys all day long, and they have a specific task and scope of work that they do. So if you've got extra time and he wants to do pro bono work, maybe, Chris, I have something that you might be able to do for me, because I know I get charged by the hour. So I'd like to see what the scope of detail is on the advice, and is he of counsel regarding this particular issue? Having said that, I'm here out of a courtesy. My courtesy is this, I'm going to rifle off, just to give you a perspective, of project labor agreements and why the town of Cumberland would be an outlier if you don't just at least do the exercise of, is it feasible or not feasible to do a PLA? That's all we're asking you to do. It's been done by Amgen, while Amgen's private. The National Guard, as Greg Mancini has mentioned, Ryac, Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation, just for full disclosure, I'm the chairman of Rhode Island Resource Corporation. Ripta, URI, Health and Human Services, Rhode Island College, DMV, Newport Navy Base, Newport Bridge, Narragansett Bay Commission, the New Health Lab Downtown, Brown University, Providence College, 20 school districts and counting, including, which I didn't mention when I addressed you earlier, the town of Johnston, my own hometown, which is currently under construction for a new elementary school and addition renovation and construction of a new high school. There are two that decided not to do a feasibility study, Westerly and East Greenwich. And we'll see how they make out, they're currently getting ready to go under construction. And I also think maybe Bristol Warren. But when you line up, and I think you as, as, and I commend you for doing your civic duty, if I'm sitting in your shoes and looking up there and say, what is the industry standard? How do people go about this when they're going to construct large, complicated construction projects? How am I going to get certainty as best as I can to make sure I meet the deadline, so I don't screw up my funding from RIDE? The way that you do it is to do a feasibility study. Because I wouldn't want to be sitting in your shoes, and for some reason, you do not decide to do a feasibility study, and then two years from now, your constituents say, why didn't you, when you had all this information that's been provided for you? How do people in this industry, when they're going to construct large construction projects, the vast majority would do that, and we didn't? Why? Because of the opinion of one attorney? I'm done.
I am. Excuse me, I want to make sure that I can be heard. Can I be heard by everybody? Good afternoon, Chairman Vogel, and Superintendent Thornton, and members of the committee. First of all, I want to point out that for years, I've looked forward to an opportunity to debate Mr. Mancini on these issues. Mr. Mancini reminded me that some 20 some odd years ago, we were on a panel for the Rhine Bar Association, in which we debated it. I didn't even remember that. But that's, what I was told is we're going to have a debate, we're going to come here and have a debate. What I got last night is I was drifting off to sleep, trying to get a good night's sleep before today, was an email indicating that Mr. Mancini had dropped a trove of information, a 12-page memo, and 50 pages of exhibits, et cetera, on the committee yesterday, late, about 5:30 at night. I didn't see it till 10 o'clock. I said, I'm not going to read this now, I got to get some sleep. I had a busy day today, but I managed to wade through it. I had a busy day today, but I managed to wade through it. That's not the way this was supposed to be done. By the way, I was not even copied. So not even the courtesy of a copy to opposing counsel so I could see what was there. It was the building... I'm sorry, it was the school committee that forwarded that to Mr. Adams, who forwarded it to me. That's not the way to go about this. And candidly, it is... It's not appropriate. This is... These are complex issues. I've heard an incredible amount of misinformation already tonight from people that were making comments from the audience to what Mr. Mancini said and others, including particularly Mr. Sabatoni. All kind... Excuse me. Hold my time while I'm interrupted, if you would. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, please. Please, thank you.
Yeah. So the bottom line is, these are complex issues, way more complex than they're making them out to be. There are so many erroneous things that are said in Mr. Mancini's submission, so many misleading things that are said, so much that is said without any backup. I could spend hours and I am happy to... I'll comment on some of them, but I'm going to hold that till later because he thrust that on the committee late. I'm going to deal with what I came here to address first. But I'm going to tell you this. Two can play the game. Here is my notebook. Here is my notebook of the pleadings in a case that I brought in Massachusetts a year ago in which I challenged the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission, which happens to deliver the water to Long Meadow, Mass., where I grew up. And I challenged a project labor agreement that was imposed by the sewer commission on a $250 million project. I represented Wayne Griffin Electric in that matter. The case went to hearings. There were extensive briefings. The challenge itself delayed the project about two and a half months. The judge issued a decision in that case which struck the PLA. And it is a decision which I'm going to hand up a copy to... I'll hand them to counsel and ask if he could distribute these to each of you. I'm going to commend this to your reading because what we had in that case was exactly what you have here. You have the building trades making all kinds of allegations which are unsupported, making all kinds of claims that were unsupported. And the judge specifically held that that's exactly what happened. He faulted the building trades for misinforming the commission, for making statements that were not accurate, such as it's not going to cost any more, maybe pennies. You heard that tonight, maybe pennies more. And turns out, there was an expert report in that matter which said that it was going to increase the cost by approximately $15 million. The judge pointed that out as a misrepresentation by the building trades. The point is, and the bigger point is, and I am prepared to provide a complete copy of these pleadings.
Wait, stop the time for one second. Listen. I'm sorry.
Sir, if you can't contain yourself, please leave. It's just not necessary.
So I am prepared to provide a copy of this entire binder to the committee. I didn't... There was not time to do so. This... I couldn't have emailed it because it's way too voluminous. You wouldn't have been able to download and print it. I wouldn't do that to you. When we originally made this filing, we had to send it out professionally. It cost a lot of money, took a lot of time to reproduce it. I'm going to have it produced because if you look through that, you will see counterarguments to basically every argument that you have heard tonight. Now, I'm not asking you to delay the decision. I don't think you need to do that. The truth is, we shouldn't be here tonight. You shouldn't be here. It is not appropriate to ask you as a committee on such a complex topic to try to digest Mr. Mancini's 12-page memo and 50 pages of exhibits that are complex, not easily understood, and much less would you be able to quickly analyze and assess what I would give to you, okay? The reality... Now, the other thing is, Mr. Mancini made brief reference to the obvious issue here, and it's the most pressing issue. And that is a relevant issue. That is, why on earth did the building trades wait to raise this issue with this committee at the 11th hour when this project has been planned and proceeding in a methodical method for two-plus years? When the general... When the construction manager was engaged months ago, at a time when the construction manager has procured, we're informed by Colliers, 66% of the project has already been bought out by Consigly. When it came on for the approval of a guaranteed maximum price two weeks ago, which was approved. This issue, mentioning it to Dr. Thornton was not going to the authority, the school committee, which is the only authority here to rule on this issue. Mr. Thornton discussed it with me months ago. I told him, based on what I saw and what I know about the law from my years of experience, I didn't see how there was any prayer of this project passing the standard set in the URI case that I tried some 25 years ago that set the law. It is not remotely of such size and complexity. And that is patent. And so I told Dr. Thornton that. But it's not his decision. And I've been told recently that the building trades also went to the building committee and got no traction there. This is a sophisticated organization. They spend lots of their time pushing these PLAs, as you know. They knew or should have known that it is the school committee that has the authority to decide. They never should have waited until the last minute. And I'm going to tell you, that is the playbook of the building trades, both in Rhode Island and in Massachusetts. It is to launch a PLA at the very last minute. That features very prominently in the Griffith... Griffin, rather, case, the pleadings of which I'm going to provide you. And the judge pointed that out because what happens is, on that project, as too often happens, the awarding authority will go out to bid. They'll pre-qualify contractors. That happened in that case. And you get all these pre-qualified contractors. In the 11th hour, the building trades will push for a project labor agreement, which does exclude merit shop contractors. I'll get to that. There's no question about it. It keeps them out. It's not accurate to suggest otherwise. And so they launch it at the last minute. It puts pressure on awarding authorities. What do we do? Will we do it? Do we do it or not? And it's absurd to introduce it after parties have been pre-qualified, sometimes after contracts have been awarded. That's not how you run a project. That's not how this school committee has approached this project. You've approached it from the beginning in a methodical manner. And that's how things are done. You hired a good construction manager who's more than willing to work with open shop contractors like Griffin Electric, which is the low electrical subcontractor bid. They came in at around three... Just under $3.8 million, which is apparently at least $500,000 less than the lowest bid of any union contractor. But this is a playbook of the building trades. Wait to the last minute so everybody scrambles, try to decide what's right and what's wrong. It's not appropriate. I want to emphasize something. I am not anti-union, to the contrary. I come from a blue-collar family. My mother... My parents divorced when I was young. My mother was 27 years old when they get divorced with four children that she raised in the 1960s, when very few children grew up in divorced families. I had all kinds of family members that are union members. I believe strongly that the beat down that trade unions have had in this country, particularly in the industrial sector over the last 20, 30 years, is shameful and it's badly hurt our economy and our citizens. I believe that trade unions helped build this country into a strong country. And I hate to see that. But here's the difference. The building trades in Rhode Island and Mass., because they have so much political influence, have grown self-important and complacent and entitled. What you're hearing tonight is a story of entitlement. We are entitled to this PLA. You have to give us this PLA. All your fellow municipalities have done that. They've given us this PLA. What's wrong with you for not giving us this PLA? I'm going to tell you something that you have no legal obligation whatsoever to do a PLA study. And if you don't, you have zero liability. There's nothing the building trades can do. They can't sue you for not doing a so-called feasibility study. You're not required to. Contrariwise, if you impose a PLA on this project, I don't know if it will happen. But you could be challenged by one of the non-union contractors who goes into court and challenges you. I don't know if they'll do it or not. Could be Griffin. I represented Griffin in that matter. I don't represent Griffin now. I'm not doing any work with Griffin. I have no inside knowledge whether they would challenge or not. But the reality is, they did up in Springfield and they... It would have an argument, a strong argument, I believe, because I think if you did agree to a PLA here, I think you... And imposed one, I think you'd be violating the law. So I also want to emphasize, I'm not opposed across the board to PLAs. I am a... I'm an attorney who believes in following the law. The URI case sets a standard for use... For a public entity to apply a PLA. How am I doing on time, Steve? Left? Okay. And I want to talk to you a little bit about that in a moment. But I want to point out that I'm not opposed to all PLAs. I'm opposed to PLAs on projects that don't remotely qualify for a project labor agreement. That don't come close to the high standard that the Rhode Island Supreme Court enacted or issued in that URI case. This is critically important. First of all, nothing to do with any... Any private owner can have a PLA on any project. If they want to pay more money to do it, they're free to do it. They can discriminate between union members and merit shop contractors. They're free to do it. So any reference in any of these materials that have been provided by Mr. Mancini to private projects, completely irrelevant. Now, public owners cannot... They have to meet the standard of URI. Why? Because the case held appropriately that a PLA can only be imposed when it would advance the twin purposes of the public bidding laws, which is to maximize competition so you get the lowest best price and to prevent favoritism. Those are the... And you have to show with a careful reasoned study that that is the case, okay? Now, as an example... So I've actually, in terms of not being categorically opposed to PLAs, I negotiated a PLA about seven, eight years ago on the Salem Harbor Energy Project up in Salem, Mass., which was just under a billion-dollar project. I represented the owner and I negotiated. By the way, I also represent many signatory contractors. I don't just represent merit contractors. And bullshit I heard from the back, but it isn't bullshit, okay? I don't... I represent both, all right? I... So I want to make that point. Now, so I want... I'm also... Well, I've already told you, you have no obligation to perform a study. And I'm going to mention that, as I'm going to discuss at greater length, I don't think there's any question that the school committee should vote... Should not vote to commission a PLA because it is going to cause... And this is the crux of it. It's going to cause significant delay and substantial additional cost to this project. And that's true whether or not you later, based on the PLA study, actually implemented PLA. The mere action at this late stage in the game of going out to commission, to identify an appropriate firm or person to do the proper reasonable PLA study, and I'm going to talk about that because the PLA studies that Mr. Mancini quoted from and has provided in Puttucket and in North Providence, and then there's also one from South Kingston, all written by the same law firm in Rhode Island, not experts in construction, do not have the requisite competence to be dealing with these complex issues and weighing in on whether or not the PLA is appropriate. In fact, I've read through them. They are cookie cutter, that same law firm. On those three that I mentioned, two of which they supplied you, North Providence and Puttucket, and I tracked down South Kingston, written by the same law firm, you will see absolute cookie cutter. They took the same document and they just changed some of the facts. Half of it's word salad. They cite the wrong legal standard. It's a young... At least one of them is signed by a young attorney, maybe eight years out, in the Conley Law Firm. They're all done by the Conley Law Firm. There's not a lawyer in that office. I'm not saying that the author is not a competent attorney. Maybe the fine attorney... I know Bill Conley, Sr. He's a wonderful guy and a fine attorney. But there's nobody in that office that has the requisite expertise to analyze these complex issues and have any meaningful input into whether or not a PLA on this project would meet the URI standard, okay? And Mr. Mancini, in his submission, the last page of his submission, I want to read something because it's important. Next... Let's see. Yeah, at the very last page, under Section 7, "The process has been anything but objective or neutral." That's where he accused me of not being neutral. I'm not neutral. I'm your lawyer. I'm advising you what I think is the best advice. I'm not hired to do the PLA study, okay? And what he said is, "Mr. Chris Whitney, legal counsel to the Cumberland School Superintendent, has said in other forums that, quote, 'The preferred way to conduct this process is to seek the advice and counsel of neutral industry experts,' end quote." Neutral industry experts. That's not what those reports are. They are back-of-the-napkin reports done by people who do not have the expertise. They may be fine attorneys. I'm not saying they aren't. They had frankly no business taking on those assignments. I've seen PLA studies in other projects, several of them in Massachusetts from years ago, and even more recently by... Who should be doing these studies? Construction management firms that are frequently national or international, that have decades of experience with construction projects, that understand scheduling, that know what a critical path is, that understand how you coordinate projects at different schools, who understand what change orders result and what causes delay, who understand the local labor force and the specific labor issues. Not somebody who just comes in and reads the case and tries to plug in, well, we think this and we think that. I submit to you, when you read those reports, you will see that they are woefully deficient. And nor are they neutral, okay? This... You want to know the... I'll tell you a couple strong indications of that. You heard it said tonight. And Mr. Mancini boasted about it in his materials. There have supposedly been some 50 projects, public projects in Rhode Island, that have supposedly had these studies. And every single one of them took a subject that the court said is a difficult subject to determine that a project actually deserves to go under a PLA, even though they are anti-competitive, the court said. Every single one of them said, it's okay, a PLA is warranted. You know why? Because there's a short list of attorneys that the building trades are cozy with and have gone to back and forth again and again and again. Jerry Visconti was a friend of mine. He used to be one of them. They've got, obviously, the Conley Law Firm. That's the most recent one they go to. They've gone to Mr. O'Gara, Bill O'Gara, who's a fine attorney, good labor attorney, not really construction attorney. But that's what they've done. They go to them. These authors of these reports know what's expected of them and they clearly give what's expected. Because you could not... If they were truly neutral, it defies logic and common sense to think that in every single case they would have concluded that a project labor agreement met the legal standard. So regardless... Excuse me, excuse me. Please don't interrupt me. Do not interrupt me, sir. Stop. Stop. His name is Sabatoni.
Those are some serious accusations. I'm sorry. You're a lawyer, you should know better. Those are some serious accusations. He just called the ethical capacity of attorney. He's asking him out, is he something? He just called it, the ethical integrity of attorney. Mr. Whitney?
Can we keep him not here because it's not helpful to this discussion? I can hear them not being happy.
You have the right to be here, sir, but we cannot disrupt.
You don't have a right to disrupt this committee. Period. You do not have a right to disrupt this committee. I'm not going to debate you.
Did you say a word? I'd like to give Mr. Whitney the same. Can we agree to that, Mr. Mancini?
I didn't say a word.
Let your spokes know that you agree with me.
I did. I just said that. I agree with you.
All right. So, how much time do I have left? How much time do I have left? Okay. I'm going to try to be quick because I know everybody's patience is probably closing in on the end, but now we get to the most important part. Regardless, regardless of the alleged merits of a PLA study, okay, it is far too late in this years-long planning process to even think about holding everything up for weeks or even months to commission a PLA study to identify the appropriate person. That's not going to be an easy task. The big construction management firms that have the expertise, they're busy people, they're not just going to drop everything to come and do Cumberland's PLA study. If they've been timely notified and given an opportunity, that's easy, but it could easily take three, four, five weeks before we identify the appropriate person and get them signed up. And if you were to do it, I'm going to advise you on how to get somebody who has the requisite expertise and is truly independent. What other problems do we have? I already went through it. Consigly signed a contract. They bought, they bought out 66% of the project. Okay? That was, and they got a confirmed GMP. And Mr. Mancini suggested that, hey, they can't change the GMP. Of course they can change the GMP. They have a GMP agreed to without a PLA. If you impose a PLA, that changes the terms of the contract. They will be at your door and they will be looking for change orders for any increased costs that they incur because you went to a PLA. Okay? Or even any increased costs as a result of the delay that will in fact happen if you even go to the study. Because as I've said, it's going to take probably several weeks to identify and engage the right competent expert, and they're going to need several weeks to do a proper investigation, not reading a few pieces of paper and rendering an opinion. And that's going to take several weeks. And so, right there, you're as much as two months of delay right off, right off the bat. Okay? Now, how and why would, picking up on that theme, how and why would voting to commission a PLA study delay the project? First, as I mentioned, you got to identify, you got to engage. I talked about how much time that's going to take. I'm sorry, I'm going back to my notes. Then, if it turns out that that study actually said, recommended a PLA and you then go with a PLA, then Consigly has already acknowledged to me that it would absolutely have to renegotiate its GMP, the town. I spoke with general counsel to Consigly, and would have to renegotiate, renegotiate all of its subcontractors with its selected trade contractors. One thing is certain. If you went with a PLA on this project, there will be no merit shop contractors that bid it. The examples that are cited by Mr. Mancini are not backed up by any substantiation. The one about the general contractor at the URI project being open shop, that's the Allboard Corporation. They don't self-perform work. They're construction manager. Firms that don't self-perform work, they don't care whether they're union or not because they don't, they're not putting people out there. So, that's not, it's the trade contractors. You'll never find a non, you'll never find a merit shop trade contractor that works under a PLA. And the reason is real simple. Put aside whether there's the double benefits issue. By the way, on that, the reason I disagree with Mr. Sabatoni is that Mr. Mancini's papers say that there's some side-letter agreement that the building trades always will give to parties under a PLA that says they don't have to pay the double benefits. He didn't say that the PLA doesn't say that. I've yet to see a PLA in Rhode Island from the building trades that expressly, in the document itself, the operative document says you don't have to pay the double benefits. Maybe some are out there, but here's the deal. They haven't even provided you with a copy. Mr. Mancini hasn't provided you with a copy of the proposed PLA here. Not every PLA is the same. The terms can differ. He gave you one page of it. Okay? So, in terms, let's talk about why or how this could and will impact the cost to this school committee and to this town. According to Colliers, Consigly's weekly administrative costs run about $35,000 a week. So, I did the math on the possible delay caused here, so it could take, as I said, three to four weeks to identify, engage somebody to do the report, another three to four weeks for that person to do the report. And then I said, if the PLA is adopted, Consigly has said that's when it's going to have to renegotiate its contracts. And one of the Consigly person told me that he expected that if that happens, if the PLA is applied, it will take them between four and eight weeks to renegotiate their contracts. Some total, you've got a span of between 10 and 14 weeks additional delay, and that's assuming that none of the merit shop contractors sue to overturn the PLA. Okay? So, how does it increase the cost? According to Colliers, as I started to say, Consigly's weekly administrative costs run $35,000 a week. 10 weeks is $350,000. 14 weeks is $560,000. But you will also lose Griffin. I told you that. Which has informed me that under no circumstances will it perform this project under a PLA, which is totally expected. He took that position in Springfield and he's true to that. That drives up the cost by another $500,000 or more. Then, as I've mentioned, Consigly is going to renegotiate its GMP to cover its, whatever additional costs it encounters, including maybe, it may have to terminate contracts, it will have to terminate contracts that it has with subs, and may have to pay termination costs related to that. If one of the subs ordered some materials far in advance, long lead items, sometimes you don't get the full return of your money if you get penalized. That'll be charged to Consigly. They're going to come and darken your door and they're going to want, Consigly is going to want that cost from you, and they're going to want their overhead profit on any additional cost. And most importantly, you will, if you go this route, if you go down this slippery slope that should have been addressed months ago, that they left at the last minute, then you're going to miss your deadline of June of 2027 under RIDE to reach a substantial completion. You're going to see $22 million in funds that would otherwise be coming to you from RIDE, and it isn't going to be coming to you and probably won't come to you until June of 2028. May come earlier, but entirely possible it won't come to you until that period of time. Now, I discussed that, the ramifications of that with Mayor Mutter today, and I had to take notes. Bottom line is, he says it's going to be a disaster if that happens. I erroneously assumed that you would have to borrow the 22 million, and I was figuring, well, what would be the carrying costs? You know, 10% is 2.2 million, and 5% is 1.1 million. He clarified, it's not quite that simple. You may have to go to reserves, this, that, or the other. But what he said is, it's going to kill your balance sheet. He said that it could be so severe that you have to raise taxes for the citizens just to pay, because he said the $22 million has to be paid, as you know, by Cumberland. And what are you going to do until you, while you wait for RIDE to reimburse it, maybe a year later? Okay? And the reality is, it's, as Mayor Mutter said, we don't want to think about that. It's just going to be an absolute calamity in town. Okay? It's going to be on everybody's tongue every single day of every single week because it's going to cause such disruption here. Now, there is one possible way that you might complete on time if you go down this slippery slope and lose these weeks or even months, and that is, there is such thing, as you've all heard of, is accelerating the work. Okay? A general contractor like Consigly can require extra staffing, double staffing, overtime weekdays, overtime on weekends, but guess what? Two things. First of all, even that won't guarantee you complete on time. There are all kinds of inefficiencies, industry studies show. When you load up and do so much overtime, the workers are less efficient, you're trade stacking, you lose all kinds of production efficiencies, so it's not optimal, and you may not make the deadline anyways. And at the end of the day, that's going to cost a ton of money. That, thank you, Steve. That is, accelerating work on a project like this could easily run you $100,000 a week, $200,000 a week. I'm not sure the number. Consigly would know. You should ask them. It would be extremely expensive, and then you still may well not even come close to meeting the deadline. So, to summarize, and by the way, I could, again, I would, I will, I'll welcome an opportunity in any forum to debate any of these issues with Mr. Mancini and if Mr. Sabatoni can behave himself with Mr. Sabatoni. Okay? I don't have time for that here. But the reality is, they came to you too late. It's not fair to you or to the citizens of Cumberland for them to ask you to digest this complex topic and think that you have to go with a PLA. I'm sorry, one final point that's critical. The reason I've sat by and watched municipality after municipality in the state of Rhode Island impose project labor agreements. Why? Because the merit shop industry in this state does not have the financial resources and has not had them to challenge any of those. I waited for my phone to ring for 24 years as I've had to sit by and watch municipality after municipality, read some poor report and get buffaloed or pressured into accepting a project labor agreement. The fact that they've all, almost all of them have done it is completely irrelevant to whether you should do it. And the most incredible egregious argument I've heard is, was read by Mr. Mancini from that report. It's in a few of them because it's the same report just repeated, and it actually says that at this point, because pretty much all the school projects have been done under a PLA, you have to do it because there's an expectation that you do it and they'll be upset if you don't. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you both. My apologies for getting a little out of joint. I like to have order when things are being discussed, and I would appreciate it if here and after we can have some order. I appreciate very much that there are strong feelings by many in this room. I really do. But the process only works if we give each side, even if you disagree with them, their time to speak. Okay? At this point, the committee may have questions for each of you or for one of you, and then the other, and my expectation is that you'll have all the opportunity you desire to answer those questions and maybe even get in a little bit of rebuttal into what the other person may have said or what have you. I'm sure, Mr. Mancini, you heard some things. I saw you scribbling. So, let's let the committee ask their questions if they have them. I'll turn it back over to the chair. She can direct that process, and I'm going to hopefully stop speaking.
Ms. Feather. One thing before we get started to the members of the public who are here, this is a meeting held in the public. This is the school committee meeting that is held in the public. And we have had really contentious meetings in the past. I've been on the committee since 2020. There have been a lot of contentious meetings, but we're trying to do the work of this committee. And we're trying to understand a very, very complex topic, so I'd really appreciate folks actually letting us try to listen to both sides so that we can understand this issue better.
Thank you, Ms. Feather. Questions from the committee?
Do you? I can kick it out.
Okay. I, do you want to start, Ms. Goldstein? I can start, it doesn't matter.
I have some too. So, whichever, whoever wants to start. We can rock, paper, scissors for it.
Okay. Ms. Goldstein. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Mancini and Mr. Whitney. I appreciated both, both pieces of this as we try to determine what the best course of action is. My, I do have a question about the bids that are currently awarded. About 60% of the project is already awarded. How much of that is currently union labor?
The vast majority of it, I'm told. And that's the irony here. This project is going to be apparently probably 85, 90% union, but they want more than that. They want 100%. It's going to be a union job. Union people are going to be paid. Union people are going to be working on the project. The largest merit shop contractor is Wayne Griffin, one of the largest electrical contractors in the country, extremely competent contractor, pre-qualified by Consigly.
So, can I comment on that? Or is that with Mr. Whitney only? I don't have access to those numbers. The building trade, I'm glad it's majority union. I would argue that may be the reason why you want to consider a PLA, because it gives you extra protections. I will say that it's 85% union. The way it works in the union world is that there's about 16 crafts, 17 crafts, and it's usually, the way it works is like it's 100% of the carpenter, 100% of the labor, 0% of the pipe fitter if they're not on the job. So, for the unions, it's a co, or it's a federation of independent unions. It's an all or nothing for those individual local unions. So, on the surface, you know, 85% is a lot, but the reality is, some union workers, some trades, it's 0%. So, but that's all I know. I would, I'll save for later, but go ahead.
I do have a question, just to piggyback on what Ms. Goldstein said. Regarding the contractor you mentioned, he's a merit shop, the electrician?
Yes. Yes.
So, open, so, open shops have gone out to bid, I guess, is open and merit the same thing?
Yes. That's right. And just, just quick clarification, they prefer to be called merit shop as opposed to opener, non-union, and the reason is, they believe in awarding contracts based on merit, not union affiliation.
Okay. So, what I heard earlier was 60%, 66?
63% is what I was told today.
63% have been offered the jobs, let's say.
My understanding. Bought out.
If a feasibility study was done and it said yes to a PLA, do we have legal risk or liability? How does that open up Cumberland? Does it open up Cumberland to any legal risk? Because I heard that mentioned regarding the Springfield situation.
So, you asked, you asked if you have a study? Okay. So, as I mentioned, you have zero liability if you choose not to have a study. If you had a study and it was by a competent, independent entity, and it said, recommended a PLA, and you decided not to have a PLA, then yeah, you could, maybe the building trades might sue you and say, well, you know, you needed to do it because the PLA study said you needed to. I've never seen that situation happen, but it conceivably could.
Yeah, that's not going to happen.
I just wanted, I think the second question, what happens if you do the PLA, you decide to do the PLA, and I guess you call them merit shop? I think that, is there a risk to the town and the community?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Well, no, yeah, if you go with a PLA, there, in this situation, for this project, there's always a possibility that one of the disappointed merit shop contractors might bring suit. So, yeah, you could expose that. Be exposed to that. I can't speak to whether they would. I have had, I have no knowledge of that whatsoever.
Mr. Mancini? Yes, sorry.
Construction manager, sorry. I think the bid package for the construction manager said the project may be subject to a project labor agreement.
You're right. It does say that.
Right.
So, that should exempt us from?
So, it's a gray area, but you know, I'm not going to tell you no, but I just, it's out. it's out there, but this was, um, uh, that was on there and I believe it was on there because of us when we went to the mayor in, uh, June of, uh, '23. So, I mean, as much as Chris said that, uh, this is a last minute tactic for us, it, it, it's not. And the record shows it with other municipalities, it's not. Uh, and we tried to, uh, now I speak to the mayor, the mayor suggested we have to go with the superintendent. Superintendent really didn't speak to us and then, um, those are his words. And then I know that Anthony from my office had some contact with school committee members also. So, um, I, I want to go back to the fact that this is not a, a last minute, uh, uh, attempt to create more problems for the Cumberland School Committee. Now, we were around from day one and in fact, uh, well, we were around from day one. Uh, but in, you know, and this was said in the, uh, RFP documents for the, uh, not RFP, but, um, construction management documents, um, initially, so I, I don't know. I mean, I think it's uncharted legal territory.
Ms. Feather? I would like to ask, what dates, um, do you have evidence of being in, um, in communication with school committee members in 2023? Because I've been on the school committee since 2020. I have not received anything around the PLA, um, from.
If I may, I'd like to ask my assistant because he's been tasked with that, if that's okay.
Right, okay. Because I, I just, I, everyone is trying to say on both sides, everyone's like, okay, there's, you know, there's evidence of this and then there's evidence of that. No one's showing us any evidence. And, and given that I've been on this committee, you're saying you've been around since 2023, but this is the first I'm hearing of it.
I can send you a, a copy of a letter that I had hand delivered to the, the mayor and then.
No, I'm talking about to the school committee, not to the mayor.
We're going to get to that.
Because the school committee is, who is in charge of this, not the mayor.
And I do apologize, uh, uh, the school committee member, uh, Feathers, uh, Feather, excuse me. I apologize. Um, we've been, as, as Greg has mentioned today, that we met with Mayor Mutter back on June 23rd, 2023. Uh, and throughout the process.
Specifically around BF Norton?
Oh, at, only, only about BF Norton.
Specifically, only around BF Norton. Okay, thank you.
To understand the project because at the time you had passed, or your representations at the state house were passing a bond, enabling bond legislation to allow for you guys to go out to bond that, that November. So we are, we tried to, in our best ability, to go out as far in advance to educate the awarding authority.
Which is us.
Well, I was about to get into that too. Because that is ambiguous at times between each, in the, between each, each awarding authority. That the entire time Mayor Mutter has suggested that it is the school building committee, which at the time I believe, uh, Superintendent Thornton was co-chair of. And so he was instructed, uh, that we go through him and, yes, not until the last building committee in which the GMP was recommended by the school building committee, that Mayor Mutter suggested that actually it's the school committee that makes that final decision. And so until we knew that factually, and so that's where we apologize for that, uh, possible delay, but we were guided in that direction.
Okay.
And, and we have communications with, uh, my, 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 myself specifically, emails talking to who we thought was decision maker, Chair, Chair Thornton from 2023, 2024, and 2025. And so.
Thank you. Um, I, I just want to reflect, I, I'm angry about this. I'm really angry about this because I am very pro-union and several union members in my family, in my immediate family, not construction, or I would have accused myself. But I'm, I'm really angry about this because it has come to us at such a late date. And I'm sorry, but, you know, knowing who's in charge and not, it, it's part of it. And I'm just so frustrated because it has come to us so late. And now we're damned if we do, we're damned if we don't. Because if we don't, you know, it, it's, it's, it's just, it's inconceivable to me. If we do, it opens us up to losing so much money and not being good stewards of, of the town's money. And, and I just, I, I'm just really angry about it.
Any other questions? Ms.
Does anybody else want to go first? I already had a question before.
Okay, all right. I, two things. I, I want to echo Ms. Feather's frustration, um, that this is something, I am new to the school committee from December 2025. I am new to this topic and I have read cases. I have read, um, studies. I have read research. I read your entire packet. So I've, I have been trying to learn as much as I can to make an informed decision. I am upset, as Ms. Feather is, that we are making this decision, we have been approached as a body, um, as a collective, so late in the game. And I, I say that to the building committee, I say that to the trade council. I, I am extremely upset with the position that we as a body are put into at this point because as Ms. Feather says, we are damned if we do and we are damned if we don't. And perhaps my thinking about things three months ago could have been different, um, than it is right now. My question is, what is the experience? We are, but, but here we are. So what is the experience that either of you have with a study being done and a PLA, PLA being put into place once construction and bidding has already happened? It appears that that is some of the crux of the case that was decided by the Rhode Island Supreme Court, that that is some of what, exactly what happened.
Yes, that is. Yes, that's exactly what happened. So, um, it, it, it's, it's a nightmare is what it is. Um, because, uh, parties are under contract and started the construction, the URI project. Ironically, uh, that came to me, Bill O'Gara, I mentioned, apparent, apparently authored a report on the Middletown project. I tried to get a hold of it, I haven't seen it. I have a lot of respect for Bill as a, as an attorney. I still don't think he's the right person to do that kind of study. But Bill O'Gara, I didn't know anything about project labor agreements until I got a call from Bill O'Gara in December of 2019, I think it was. And he said, I need your help. He was, he brought a challenge against the project labor agreement on the Ryan Center at URI, like a $75 million project. And the state had moved to disqualify him because he had done state work and he, and he had to step down. And he, he threw me, uh, the assignment. So that's, that's when I first started getting involved. So, so that was the case. The project was already underway. There were trade packages out and we had, uh, the, the case was we had two weeks of round the clock depositions leading up to Christmas week. We, we had a two-week trial that was the week until Christmas. I remember on December 22nd, that Friday, it's my birthday, we quit late in the day. Judge said, I'll see you, uh, Tuesday morning, I guess, 20, yeah, day after Christmas. His staff was very upset with him because he was making them work through the holidays normally they're off. So he knew how critical it was because it's in the middle of a project. And what, and it created all kinds of problems, renegotiating contracts, et cetera. The same thing hap, uh, in, in Springfield, uh, actually, it, it didn't, it, in Springfield, what happened is the PLA was imposed after the bidding and, and after everybody was told there would be no PLA. And we, and we were able to get everything enjoined because we said the PLA wasn't valid. So they never actually signed any contracts. So they didn't have to unwind everything, but it took two and a half months, Ms. Goldstein, and it cost, uh, on our end alone, well over $100,000 to try that, prepare it, cost the sewer authority, I'm sure, an equal amount of money. So it, delay was, a huge delay was inherent. And the, and the building trades said that we were causing the delay because we sued and the judge says, you'll see in his opinion, you created your problem. You waited until the last minute to try to impose a PLA, which is exactly what's happened here.
I would, uh, just, uh, it's uncharted territory. We have not been involved in any projects like that. We've been involved in a number of projects, um, never had any litigation. Uh, I will say that, uh, I actually also had gone before the building subcommittee in the way, you know, I'm fully aware that ultimately it's this body that makes the decision, but usually the subcommittee, the building subcommittee makes a recommendation. And so that's why I'd gone through them, never heard from them, tried to have continued contact with the superintendent. And then more recently, Anthony, I think, had a modest exchange with the chair, so.
So essentially, part of what we're, part of what is being asked of Cumberland is to be a test case for this? If you have uncharted territory, if this is uncharted territory?
So I'm telling you what other school districts have done and what's been successful. Um, and as much as, uh, Chris disagrees, I, I think those studies have been done by multiple attorneys. Um, and they've also, we've had panels, particularly at URI, and I think they're very valid. I think overall, construction is a very complex issue. I had mentioned that at the beginning of my remarks, uh, and there's a lot of risk. When it comes to labor, I, I think that, you know, we don't need these national firms coming in. They don't know the local labor market. It is not overly complicated. You know, it's, it's about figuring out supply of labor, figuring out, you know, uh, skilled labor, who's got the skilled labor, who invests in labor? So if you have a, if you have a good labor plan, then I think you're fine. But other, other components of the project are absolutely complicated. Scheduling and, you know, and latent defects, as I mentioned earlier, absolutely, you know? But as far as, um, uh, labor, I, 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 I think that I stand behind. I think those are independent studies and the, you mentioned that, yes, they're all in the same, they're going the same way, but number one, it's not, it's not a, it's not a complicated analysis, number one. And number two is, uh, those are 50 studies. I don't know how many capital improvement projects there are in the state every year. I'm sure there, I bet you it's, you know, it's, it's a small percentage. These are the larger ones, yes, okay? But the, we have a very, this is a very small percentage of the overall market, you know? I mean, there's, and you've had other projects, 10, $15 million, whatever, you know, with, they're, they're, we don't try to advocate for studies on those projects. We pick and choose. Me, right, uh, URI is having a major project, uh, for, uh, altering the stadium, significant. We didn't solicit a study request from the university for various reasons, which I won't bore you with. But, um, getting back to your original question, um, that's, you know, for you to decide and we thought we'd present to you successes in the marketplace that we've had, uh, and the markets had. And, and I think the core issue is, is labor supply. I was with, uh, the most, one of the most prominent construction managers in the state of Rhode Island today, signatory to two construction trade unions. And they told us that, uh, we're concerned about, uh, the schedule. There's 14 major school construction projects that are going to be online by July of 2027. You know, we're going to have, uh, multiple subcontractor bids for the same scope of, or the same type of labor at the same time. And the only way to make sure those happen is, I think, is with union labor because, um, we have access to, uh, local folks, but also regional folks if necessary. So, um, I do want to go back to, if I may, uh, comments made, uh, about me dumping, uh, documents on you and not giving them to Chris. Uh, I'll be honest with you, I thought I was being set up. Uh, I mean, I know that, uh, Chris had been talking to superintendent. Uh, I never received anything from him. I didn't know what he, what, uh, information was back and forth between the administration and him. I, I thought I was being set up. Um, and, you know, I'm not the one who has the numbers. I'm not the one who has all the specific information of how low Griffin is versus other people. That's, it's information that was not available or given to me, so.
Um, I do have a question. I know you mentioned earlier that the GMP, about the 43.2 million.
Yeah.
That it would not even go over that with a PLA.
Well, look, I'm, I'm a, I represent construction unions and ultimately, uh, I don't have that ultimate authority. But my point to you is, uh, you know, the community had a specific GP, GMP and, uh, we're not here to suggest in any way, shape or form that that should increase. Because I think a lot of times when people think about union labor, they think it's more expensive, okay? And that it's going to cause the price to increase. The fact of the matter is the prevailing wage rate is based on the union wait, rate. They come to unions and ask, what's the rate? So, um, uh, so we want to make sure that we, we don't support anything that would increase your GMP.
I'd like to comment on that, if I may, briefly. Um, the, uh, the reason that the union signatory contractors typically charge more is, strike that. The reason that a project owner will pay more under a PLA is not the wages paid by the signatory, which is a union contractor or the merit shop contractor. They're the same by prevailing wage. It's that when you knock out the merit shop, make it impossible for them to bid, you have less competition. And there are many examples of cases that I've been involved in, in Massachusetts, where we've successfully stopped a PLA after it got started and, and you were able to measure and, and when, when there was a PLA on, all the merit shop contractors dropped out, they wouldn't bid it. And then when we got the court to say, get rid of the PLA and rebid it, all of a sudden you had a flood of merit shop contractors. So that's really, so that's what makes it more expensive for owners is you, and it's such common sense. If you limit competition, the prices are going to go up. That's the essence of it.
Well, I mean, like he says, eight, the job is 85% union right now and there's a reason for that. Uh, we'd point out that there are subcontractors that, I mean, in his case, he talked about, uh, affidavits from subcontractors who are, um, not going to bid it. And one of those subcontractors just wanted a pro, wanted a subcontract award, um, for, um, Spansy Honor Middle School under a project labor agreement. So, united.
I do have a comment.
Yes, Ms. She.
Um, kind of to, just to backpedal with the communication that we're talking about the lapse, Attorney Mancini, um, when it came to finding out who the person or the higher being would have gotten the ball rolling, I guess, on our end. I'm a little concerned when it comes to the time around or how that timeline is looking. Um, I was appointed to this building committee in June. Um, I had a very brief conversation with Mr. Cherry on the phone. That was on June the 18th. That was two weeks after there was a letter that was mailed to Madam Chair Vogel. Since June of '25, on the 18th, I have never heard anything pertaining to this, being the liaison between the building committee and this body. There was no communication with me directly since the 18th of June. That puts us out three months up until recent date.
I think I was in the school, I think I went before the building committee, uh, I, I think April, yeah. But I'll just go back to.
Can I just finish?
I, I'm sorry.
There was a representative of this body that was on that building committee, but I'm assuming that that was not brought to that attention either for this voting body. So when we're talking about communication and you're not getting, you know, the information that you want, whether it's from the superintendent, from the building committee, we offer public comment at every Thursday meeting that we have twice a month. There could have been an opportunity given. Or there could have been at least an opportunity to voice your feelings about maybe a lack of response that you were experiencing. And that, I think, is what the issue is. It does a very big lapse of communication happening between three bodies. Um, and I don't know what we need to do to rectify that, but just pointing the finger at each other is not going to help the situation because this is where we're at. And especially when we're interrupting each other while we're trying to talk and absorb this information that we're maybe not all familiar with, it's extremely difficult when we have parties here that make it harder for us as a body to listen to presentations. So that's all I just wanted to say.
Any other questions from any of the members? Okay. Would that be, oh, sorry. Oh, Ms. Feather, did you, Ms. Dean?
I don't, I don't have a question, just had a comment.
Yes.
Um, so I agree, I mean, I understand what you guys are saying, what the, what the union reps are saying about, um, you know, you, there is some ambiguity about who to approach. Uh, before I got on the school committee, uh, I, I was, well, not before, before. Before I got on the school committee, I, I was, well, not before, before I retired from the Army, I was in facilities, and we did, in fact, do PLAs for our projects over a certain monetary threshold. We don't always award them, but I spent eight years in, as a master planner, so I'm very familiar with that. I wouldn't expect that it would be anybody but the mayor who would, who would be the person that I would go to for that. And if you were, were in correspondence with the superintendent, who was on the committee, and, you know, that should have been brought to us sooner, in my opinion. I, I wasn't on in twenty-three, twenty-four. But we did have another issue a few months ago, where there was an issue, you know, there was something brought to us that seemed like it was the last minute, and there was nothing we could do about it. We did, we passed, we passed it, and then we were, we had an emergency meeting, or special meeting, rather, and then we had to, we had to renege on, on what we had passed because of financial situations, and it was too late, too, too little, too late. We would have had to redo the budget. And I felt sabotaged, to be quite honest, being that I'm a new member, I, you know, and, and I didn't know that was coming down. I don't control the agenda. The superintendent and the chair controlled the agenda, and it was put on way too late. This is another instance where, quite frankly, and I know I'm not the only one, I can't speak for other members of the committee, but I know I'm not the only one, I, I feel sabotaged again. You know, we're, we're the elected officials, we're the, we're the body that is supposed to approve expenditures, and I feel sabotaged. There's no reason that, that this study should not have been done, you know? But my first obligation is to the children, you know? And the children are not going to have a school to go to, it seems, you know, there's a chance they won't have a school to go to if, if, if we open this can of worms. The money is less of an issue, but is obviously an issue, you know? If, if, if we're manipulating things in a town where if we, if we take a, if we take a, a two or three or four week delay that we're going to lose the funding, then we're doing something wrong. This should have been addressed earlier, and it's, it's, you know, it's very concerning that it wasn't addressed earlier. But again, you know, yeah, we, we have to, we have to, you know, and I, I'm not going to say what my vote is, but I think you can, you can figure it out. We have to get the kids in that school, you know? And that's unfortunate, the unfortunate part of it is, you know, we're, we're kind of, we're kind of forced here now. That was all I'm saying.
Thank you. Any other questions?
If I may, just, we certainly have the same objective as you. We do not want to penalize your project, your children, your community, as one of our members came and testified as a resident. But we had, I think that we had, you know, reached out to town officials on a number of occasions. I do think that, you know, public open meeting laws issues may have been an issue, I don't know, but, but we have reached out to, I'm not going to rehash it, but we've reached out to officials on numerous occasions. Could we have done more? Yeah, we could have done more. I think you can always do more, but I think that, and we certainly know that ultimately the school, this body makes the decision. I don't want you to think we don't know that, because we do know that. But also, other entities or other people have influence over what you do, and even before you do it, in fact, some make recommendations to you, and that's why we went to them. But certainly we respect any decision you make.
Anything else? Okay. So, discussion, interaction, unauthorized, independent feasibility study determined if implementing a project labor agreement is in the best interest of the Cumberland School Department? Am I hearing no action? Or am I not hearing no action? I'll take that as no action. Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Thornton, do we need to go into executive session?
No, we don't.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Goldstein. Second by Ms. Shea, all in favor? Any opposed? That passes five to zero, we adjourn at nine fourteen PM.